Okay, let's get started. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll begin with a roll call.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Papescu.
Here.
Mayor Bertemperie Leonard.
Present.
Mayor Riggsby.
Present.
And Councilman Duper is absent. We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will begin with our invocation and pledge of allegiance led today by Councilman Daley. Please stand. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir, but I have some correction on item nine when we get to it.
Okay. We'll take that when we get there. We have two requests for comment from the public on non-agendized items, so we'll begin with those. And if anyone else has a comment you'd like to make, you can submit a comment request. The papers are in the back. First is Larry Karpenko.
Good evening, Mayor Riggsby and council members. My name's Larry Karpenko, 11885 Hollis Court. And I just want to give a thank you to the fire chief, the fire crew, the sheriff's department, and the city animal rescue chief and their crew for efforts in saving the life of my friend Chuck Haney this last week. Chuck was in a very serious mountain biking accident in the South Hills and sustained life-threatening injuries. And the crew were able to find him, safely get him on a board, air him out of there, and get him to medical treatment. So if it weren't for your efforts, I don't know if my friend Chuck would be alive. So from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for your efforts. Thank you.
We also thank our public safety personnel. That kind of service is what we've grown to expect in Loma Linda, and it's delivered every day by our public safety people. We really appreciate it. Our next public comment is from Joe Frank about the Frank Adobe.
Good evening. I'm Joe Frank, not a resident of Loma Linda, live in Redlands, but here on behalf of the Frank Adobe that needs to be saved. I too was in law enforcement for 25 years and appreciate the sheriff's office and the firefighters and what they do in the safety of the young man. Before I start, I'd like to mention something. I understand the Frank Adobe was broken into again before this last cold rain, and that the crews went out there to repair it and to secure it up again, and there were still people in there, which I think is a hazard to your city workers. I think the sheriff's office ought to be called, and the sheriff's office check it out, because those homeless people are not always calm and cool. They can be dangerous. They could stick one of you guys with a needle, hit them with a club, whatever they might have available, especially if they're desperate. But I guess there was no incident then. I'd just like to pass that along. I went to a historical meeting last night, and I was very disappointed in the results of that. During the meeting, they talked about the celebration for the San Hall here in 2019 in April sometime, excuse me, 200-year anniversary. And they talked about Heritage Park, which Frank Adobe is not part of. It's half a mile away. I asked if the Frank Adobe would be in any shape to be included in that, and a conrad immediately spoke up and said, "No, it wouldn't." Well, that really makes me upset. That is the most historical building in this city. Whether you like it or not, it does not have medical background, but it's citrus industry beginning and the commerce that built this valley. And I think it's being neglected.
Pardon me, what building is that?
The Frank Adobe. It's 24, or it's 26248 Mission Road.
Okay. Okay, now I know where we're at.
I personally don't care what happens or what you people decide to do with Loma Linda. As far as I'm concerned, it can blow away. But I am concerned about the Frank Adobe, which was once county, his old Mission District, along with Bill Maher, which neither ever asked to be incorporated into the city. It just happened. I'm very sorry that it was not picked up by Redlands, because they have a great conservancy that does a fantastic job of taking care of old buildings and preserving their history. I believe if those trees were bearing scalpels and four steps, the historical commission and the city would jump all over that to make it historical. I just don't think they give a damn about citrus, nor what it represented in this county. There's been numerous planning commissions where they were supposed to do things with the old Mission District down there with signage, and that's different thing. And no, it got put off for one reason or the other. Signage and that, and a large arch that was supposed to designate the Mission District, that never got done, and you can't hold the people's feet to the fire now for it. And I'm sorry that the Frank Adobe is in the way of your person's development. You might as well, you tore all those groves out down there, or had them torn out. Somebody tore them out. And you took a big part of my heart with that. You should have just hooked a chain on my heart and pulled the rest of it out. If the Frank Adobe goes, it's going to kill me, I'll tell you, because it's the last vestige of the Franks in this valley. And my great-great-grandfather started that in 1866, finished it in 1874, and lived in it for about two weeks before he died of tuberculosis. So, and there's about 30 trees that are still producing, some aren't, that are original plantings. And I would definitely like to see Loma Linda get on the ball and save that and get it ready before it crumbles to the ground. Thank you.
May I respond? Sir, I'm right here. I did respond to your email, and like I stated in your email, that the house had been secured.
Yes.
Put the board up. We put a chain link fence around the property. We're also in the process of working with Edison to bring the power to the house so that we can put up security lighting and security camera. We also have a schedule for cleaning up the area, and that's coming, including moving some overgrown vegetation in front and in the back around it. And we're also going to go out with Mrs. Jim Ship to identify the old orange trees that we want to save, and then we'll bring in the irrigation to save all those trees, the old trees. So it's in the works, sir.
Well, you know, that's all fine and good, but that's only preventive maintenance. That's not refurbishing it. And the first thing, Jim Ship's a great guy, and he's done a fantastic job in the historical committee. But he's not a farmer. He never grew up in a large group. You need somebody like Dick Wiley or myself to come down and tell you how to irrigate those trees properly. You just don't flood the area or, you know, put a sprinkler out there and expect it to get done. Sometimes it takes 24 hours for, if you use a furrowing system, for the water to stand or to run into those furrows. The trees need to be fertilized. There needs to be some training. There's a lot of work. And I'm willing to help at, you know, no charge. Frankly, I wish my dad had never sold a ranch. You know, I could kick him with my bad leg right now, but, but back in that days, in '64, I was in high school, you know, what say did I have it?
But we are, I'll let you know, we are working on it.
Well, I was promised the irrigation there in November, by the end of November, and it hasn't happened. So I'm not going to hold my breath, but I hope, I hope you guys really do. And if, the other thing is that it wasn't on the agenda for the $100,000 funding request. And I know you're going to tell me it was included, but if it's not written down, it never happened. I've been in government.
You're talking to me. I respond back, and I say this in front of council. I will get done, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, why did you put up a fence? Walls don't work. Yeah, but walls don't work. That's my response, too.
So Jarb, are you gonna, yeah, were you planning on adding this item to an agenda item with a little bit more detail as to what exactly we're doing on this issue?
Well, right now is because the expenditure is under $5,000. I can prove that. So, but if you want the background, be happy to bring it back and let you know what's going on. Yes?
Okay.
Okay, any other requests for discussion for non-agendized items? None? Okay, then we'll move forward. Item number one is one of those mixed emotion moments. Tim Bradfield's been with us for a short time, but he's had a great impact. Been with us for three years and got some commentary from our fire chief.
Okay, Tim, why don't you come on up so I can embarrass you? This is actually a fun thing to do and something that, as firefighters, that we look at with joy and then also with sadness is retiring after a very, very long career. Just a little bit about Division Chief Tim Bradfield. Tim started in the fire department, actually as a paid call firefighter in Highland with CAL FIRE in, was that '83?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two. He was hired in Colton as a firefighter in 1985, and then went to paramedic school and became a paramedic in 1990. He became an engineer in Colton in 2008, became a captain in Colton in 2009, and then in October of 2015, Tim applied for the fire marshal position here in Loma Linda. Prior to applying, he worked with Jamie Gray, who he worked with in the city of Colton, and volunteered his time to learn the fire marshal's position at the Ronald McDonald House expansion and also the FMO parking structure amongst some other projects. Additionally, before he was hired here, he volunteered to come work as a captain here in Loma Linda when we were doing that with the functional consolidation, and spent many, many days here working in the city of Loma Linda. One of the things with the fire marshal position in Loma Linda, it is a very, very complex job. And arguably, we probably have the most complex building in the county right now being built here in Loma Linda. So this is no small feat. The fire marshal position is not necessarily a coveted position by firefighters. It's not riding Big Red and getting to squirt water and high-five everybody. It's actually working with business people in very complex situations, and not everybody can do it. Quite frankly, when Chief Bender and I hired Tim and brought him over to Loma Linda, we thought long and hard about it, and he was a right fit for us and for the community. And that's why we made that decision. Tim is a very caring individual, was a trusted member of our command staff. I could go to Tim with any problems that we would have. He would give me very, very good advice and input, and was an integral member of the command staff, and I certainly appreciate that. Tim retired on December 27th of 2018 from the city of Loma Linda. So thank you so much, Tim, for your hard work. Thank you for your friendship. You'll be missed. I could get a little choked up about it, but I'm going to try not to. And we certainly appreciate your hard work for the city of Loma Linda and also for the city of Colton. So if you'd like to say something, but not too much. He likes to talk, and we want to be out of here before midnight.
Well, thank you, Chief McCarg. Mayor, council, city staff, family members. It was a difficult decision to make. Standing here in front of it kind of gets me started on, am I supposed to be doing we debatement or something like that? But in all seriousness, you know, I have to thank the Lord for, you know, the opportunities that presented to me and, you know, to maintain my health, to get through the 33 and third years or whatever of firefighting and stuff. It's a, it's a very challenging career, but it's a very rewarding career also. I need to also thank my beautiful wife for, she was there for the majority of those 33 and a third years and by my side supporting me, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
So as far as Chief McCarg goes, we had quite a few years together, and we had lots of fun times. And I really cherished, I really supported the functional consolidation with East Valley Fire, and I hope that that, you know, we're able to continue that at some level. But I would just like to thank the city of Loma Linda for the opportunity to be the fire marshal. It's a, it is a very important job, and I did my wholeheartedly best, you know, while I was fire marshal. I just really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could also, I believe this is your first council meeting with your new interim fire chief, so Chief Dan Harker, who will take very good care of the city of Loma Linda.
Welcome, Chief Harker. Well, Tim did a great job, and we really appreciate. It's one of the toughest jobs around. It's, it's hard to tell important people they can't do something. It's something I've had to do a lot in my career, and I really respect people who are willing to do it. So thank you for helping us out. Okay, next on our agenda is a proclamation. We have National Mentoring Month, January 2019. And we have Jeanette Zito here to receive the proclamation. I'll do some selected readings from the proclamation. Whereas January has been designated as National Mentoring Month to focus national attention on the need for mentors, whereas the National Mentoring Month Public Awareness Campaign, recognized by Presidential and Congressional Proclamation and led by Mentor, and in conjunction with the Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health and Highland Street Foundation, illustrates that when matched through quality mentoring programs, mentors can play a powerful role in providing young people with the tools to make responsible decisions. Whereas students who meet regularly with their mentors are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school, and youth who face an opportunity gap but have mentors are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college. Whereas the Mentoring Resource Specialist and Mentoring Task Force is designated to bring together existing mentoring programs and resources, sharing information and facilitating mentoring relationships between youth, being served by the Department of Behavioral Health Children and Family Services. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Loma Linda, on behalf of the entire city council, proclaim the month of January 2019 as National Mentoring Month. Please come forward to receive your proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Riggsby and the council members. Just wanted to say thank you on behalf of San Bernardino County Children's Network for recognizing that January 2019 is National Mentoring Month. We all know that it's really important to recognize that mentoring is important. It builds leadership. It helps engage children in school, and also helps with getting children to avoid risky behaviors. There are nine million children in the country who will grow up between the ages of eight and 18 that will not have a mentor. And in San Bernardino County, that looks like about 107,000 children. So we encourage everyone to think about mentoring this month and how you could possibly make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number three is public hearing council bill O-2019-01, first reading setting a second reading for February 12, modifying our wastewater rates. And there are, for when the public hearing begins, there are two comments. But we'll do that when we get the public hearing going. We'll start with a presentation by Public Works.
There's really no presentation, because we presented at the February, I mean, November 13 meetings for the draft.
Could you summarize for the audience what we're about to vote on?
Yes, for the, for the third, for the item three is to propose sewer rate increase for the next five year in the tuned up four and a half percent a year. And if you look at the table, for the residential, so the existing rate is $31.24. Come March 1st, 2019, it will increase what, by $1 to $32.24. And that's by monthly, so that's every two months. So it's about 50 cents a month for sewer rate increase. So for residential, for the commercial will change from $8.74 to actually decrease to $7.18. And we also have commercial under mobile home park, non-office, office, auto services, laundry, restaurant, and all other commercial. They have a great list in the table provided in the staff report. That's in my report.
Now, it's listed as water and sewer rates.
No, sir. Item three is only for sewer. Item four is water.
For water, okay. Then I imagine the people who are commenting on H3 will also be commenting on H4. Yeah.
Let me add one more thing. We did, as part of the Prop 218, we did mail out the notices to 5,5100 notices to the property owner and the tenant, of which we received a total of 49 letter back in protesting the rate increase. So 49 out of 5,100.
Okay, just for the record, can you give a short summary of why this rate increase was needed?
Yes, sir. The, like everything else for the sewer, there's every labor increase, the electrical rate increase, because we do have a sewer lift station. After you have to pump the sewer to the sewer distribution, I mean sewer line. Now, one thing about the city of Loma Linda is we broke down the sewer services to two components. One is the sewer pipe itself. Another component is the sewer treatment. And the city of Loma Linda, we don't have our own sewer treatment plant. We send our sewer to the city of San Bernardino Sewer for treatment. So there's a separate bill. Well, they receive one bill combined the two component. And this $32 a month is only for the city portion, and there's no increase in the city of San Bernardino portion. So, does that make sense?
So did they raise the rates for us?
Well, if they decide to do it to cover their costs, yes. But they had to go through Prop 218 by sending out notices, and just like we have to do.
Yeah. And the reason the sewer flows to San Bernardino is because it's downhill?
It's downhill, and we don't have our own sewer treatment plant. It costs more to have our own sewer treatment plant for a small, small city.
I just wanted to clarify the physics. Okay. Any comments from the, from the dais, and then we'll go to the public comment? No comments? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, and we'll begin with our friend Larry Karpenko.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember members. I'm Larry Karpenko at 11885 Hollis Court. And I would like to speak on two points. This could apply to item three and four. Two points, an effort to persuade you to vote no on this tonight, on this water and wastewater hike. The first is the failure of the letter to identify why we needed this rate hike under Prop 218. One of the specific areas is that it should state why the rate hike needs to happen. In the letter, I did not see the information stated as to why we needed the rate hike. It was absent. And you can, the letter itself, you can reread it, and it's absent. So I think that the residents haven't been done their just notification to be able to do a protest vote. And I believe that the process that we're evidencing this evening is a low integrity for the vote. That's my first point. My second point, final point, is the financial obligations that we have to cover our financial utilities. It's a cost that equal among all of our residents. So using a youth-dependent structure to raise that money does not make sense. When I say use to make structure, use, that means the more you use, you know, you'll pay a higher rate, the different tiers. It doesn't make sense for this sort of funding to pay for the obligation. I believe with fairness as a consideration, that a better way even would be to put a flat fee to cover some of these increased costs. That would be a fair way to share the burden. If you notice, residents are shifting toward drought-tolerant landscaping, fine-tuning the water use and conservation. So raising water and wastewater rate increase, it's not an adequate solution. Literally, a vote on yes is just chasing revenues that I see as they're evaporating. As people are conserving, that money isn't going to be there. It's not going to solve what we are trying to solve as a city for the money, the financial obligations that we have. So in conclusion, as a solution to consider, I think we could set a new standard in the city of Loma Linda, not the old path of just raising rates to try to raise the gap on our financial obligations. I propose a hybrid sort of solution. It includes a fat, a flat fee that would be opposed for everyone, a mild increase, and even a consideration, maybe a short-term bond that could be used towards future capital expenses that can help soften. These mechanisms combined together could better share the cost in a fair manner while at the same time, it would be easier on your pocketbooks, and it would meet the obligations that we have. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Can I ask you a question? Come back. The wastewater rates for residential are a flat rate. So you're referring to, you like a flat rate for the, for the water use?
Well, having a flat rate, get a flat rate going for everyone that was going to start funding some of the financial obligations that we're starting to see that are ballooning costs. And I think that if everyone, anyone who has a residence in Loma Linda could have, you know, a $21 fee or something, that would be a baseline fee regardless of how much water they use. That would start to fill in those gaps.
Yeah, the wastewater is purely a flat rate. There's not a volume-based rate, I think, on wastewater.
Correct. I can go over, when item four come up, I will go over the water.
And on the water use itself, it's a combined rate. It's partly based on volume and partly a flat rate based on your connections, the size of your connection to the system.
Correct. So, I'm suggesting increasing that to cover some of those costs, increasing those flat fees. That would, that would be a share, a fair way to share those costs.
Okay.
I'm struggling to understand your logic in arguing against a progressive rate for water rate. In other words, this is one of those rare commodities where, where the organization wants the consumer to use as little as possible and wants to reward lack of use. And this seems to be not only a traditional, but a very logical way of achieving that outcome. So, help me understand your logic in arguing against that. Because if I, if I water twice a day and you order, or you water twice a week, it makes sense that I would have to pay a progressive rate as a penalty for that so-called overuse of water.
Yes.
Go ahead.
To respond to that, as a mechanism to conserve water, yes, I agree with this concept as an effort to conserve water. However, our main goal is to raise our unfunded debts and obligations that we have, financial obligations for the city as a whole. Those are longer-term goals. And so, I would love if I take my yard and go to a desert scheme, and I, and I reduce, I have not contribute, I will not be contributing to our overall goal, those, those bigger things that you mentioned need to be funded. So, I, I can support it as a short-term method to conserve water. It works, but it's not going to meet our longer-term financial obligations, I don't believe. We are going, the new developments are going to desert scape-type low-water use. So, I see, I don't see those profits coming in to, to fill the gaps.
A, a little background, a couple of years ago, the governor did mandate that the city have to reduce water consumption by twenty percent by 2020. And right now, we're not even close to that. So, yes, water conservation is very important for the city. And if you look at, when we get to item four, I will explain how our rate work in the tier system so that if you use less water, you pay less. And you use more water, at greater tier, you pay more. And I'll be happy to go over that when item four come around, yes.
And my objection is that this increase is not stated as, you have not told the city, we want to conserve water because we are over, there's no numbers that have been shown to me as a resident, and that, that information has not been conveyed.
Yes, sir. This, this table was sent it as part of the letter. This table was attached to the, to the.
And that shows the data about that we need to conserve water as a city?
Yes. May I go over item four now? Okay.
Go ahead, because the public comment makes no sense to break it up.
Right, okay. If you look at the, on exhibit A, for three-quarter inch pipe, this is the standard water meters that go into your house. In the old, the old pipe is more like three-quarter. The new houses and the new meter that we put in is now one inch, okay? So, if you look at the by monthly for three-quarter inch, existing charge is thirty-dollar and twenty-six cents, okay? For May, for March of this year, it will increase to thirty-two-dollar and eighty-four cents. That's an increase of two-dollar and sixty-two cents every two months, a dollar and thirty cents. If you look at one-inch meter, okay, existing charge is fifty-five-dollar and thirty-nine cents. It's reduced to forty-five-dollar and sixty-eight cents for the first year, forty-seven-dollar and seventy-three cents for the second year. So, it's actually reduced. That's mean the flat rate is reduced, okay? The same thing with an inch and a quarter, an inch and a half, two inches, three inches, all the fixed costs is actually reduced, okay? But what we did was, we changed the, the volume rate because it's two, two element in, in the water. One is fixed, and one is volume rate. So, for example, the existing tier rate is the first one-hundred cubic feet, which is equivalent to about four, seven-hundred and forty-eight gallon, it costs a dollar and forty-three cents per hundred cubic feet. The new rate will be from zero to eighteen is a dollar and sixty. Eighteen to fifty is now two-dollar and thirty. So, it's actually, the, as the more you use, the second tier or the third tier, you get, you get charged more. So, the average household with four people, we use about between fifteen and eighteen hundred cubic feet. So, typically, you, you will pay about twenty cents more per a hundred gallon, a hundred, I'm sorry, a hundred cubic feet, which is a lot, so. Is that explained? And the whole purpose is, we want people to conserve water, to use less water. So, it's benefit for the person that have, one person in the household compared to people with four or five, they, they use, that use more water, they pay more.
Well, and, and my last comment is, I mean, I accept what you're saying that the priority to conserve water maybe could have been more vividly emphasized in the letter. Having said that, with all of the drought issues in the news, we've had multiple discussions in this setting. I mean, somebody'd have to be sleeping under a rock to not realize we're trying to conserve water, and in fact, there's a risk to the city of a substantial fine from the state if we don't meet the targets. So, it could have been emphasized more, I'll accept that. But I can't imagine any of our citizens that take water rates seriously not being aware of our efforts to conserve water.
Councilman Daly, the November 13, the emphasis from that report was that our city needed to raise money for capital improvements, and to, there's going to be financial obligations that are associated with the operation. And those are a major, major reason why this vote is here tonight. And there's very little said at that time about the water conservation component of it. So, that's where I'm having a divide here.
That it's not for lack of publicity. It's been discussed in this setting multiple times, as well as state and national news. So, I, but we can always continue to keep that on the forefront, too.
Yeah, and that's the reason why I do passionately stand here, and I think it is the best interest for us to consider raising money through a few different ways, and one could be raising that flat fee. It's very fair across, and I don't like it, I don't want to see my bill go up. But I do realize that we have a financial obligation to things that we are obliged, and I, I want to, those things have to be respected, and.
And, and you are correct. In addition to water conservation, we do have to spend money on replacing our infrastructure. Every year, we, we spend a lot of money replacing water meters, replacing the old pipes, and, and so, we have been doing that every year, so, since I've been here, so. That's a good thing.
Just as one final comment in back row. What I have heard from citizens regarding water rates is their water, not that the rates increased, but their water bills began to increase as we began installing more modern contemporary machines because they more accurately measure water use. My water bill went up, and I've heard from quite a number of people, but that wasn't because of a rate increase, so this is different. And a dollar and thirty cents a month is, you know, most people, that's not going to stretch. But I, I understand your point, and I appreciate your comments, I really do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next comment is from Daryl Nelson.
Yes, Mayor, council, and my neighbors. I've got two things also to bring up about this. Number one, I've contacted four of my neighbors. None of them got this notice. I was the only one, so that's, you know, less than twenty percent. I feel you should postpone your decision and postpone the vote until these are remailed to where every one of our neighbors gets this. My second item is, in here, it states the water system provided entirely by the City of Loma Linda, rates are proposed to be increased four-point-five percent beyond what was previously approved. This is very misleading. I think somebody needs to rewrite this to everyone. This is four-point-five percent per year for five years. That's almost twenty-five percent increase. My wages aren't going up twenty-five percent in the next four, five years. So, those are my two concerns. I think you need to let everyone know that this is what's really happening.
I have a question for you. Do we, and for also for the city manager, we send these to the owner of record?
We, we send to both, the owner of record and.
And the resident of the, of the property.
Correct.
Okay. And who has the vote to say they approve or disapprove?
It's be the, the property owner. Right, Prop, it's part of, Prop 218.
Yeah, I haven't looked at that specifically. If there's a difference between the owner and the person paying the bill, it might also go to the person paying the bill, who's on the account. But typically, those are the same individual. Landlords and tenants sometimes decide who will pay the bill, and in those cases, both would get the notice. But more likely, the property owner would be the one with the right to vote.
Yeah, and then my question of you is, are the, are your neighbors renters or owners?
Through, all four are owners.
Okay.
Three have lived in their homes for over thirty years. The fourth one's only lived there a year, so you might have missed him, that's fine.
Yeah, what, one of the puzzling things I, I have about, about the mail is, you know, probably only about ten percent of my mail comes to my awareness because my wife throws it out before it comes to me. So, I don't, when people say they didn't get their mail, I sympathize with them because I don't get mine either. But I, there, but there's not, it's not always the city's fault that I don't see them. So, I don't, I don't know where those went, and I'm, and I'm sorry if someone didn't get a notification because that's not good.
Those are just my two major concerns, because I, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next commenter is Kristi Winter. And then it looks like we're getting some new ones. Everybody was walking back to the, to the papers.
I'm a property owner in Loma Linda. And I'm absolutely appalled at the amount of increase in this, four-point-five percent above what was previously approved. I'm retired, I have a limited income. There's nothing I can do about that. And this is just astronomical. I, I can't believe that you would put this over on the citizens of Loma Linda. Loma Linda is not a citizen-friendly city. Your focus is on business and the university and the hospital. It's not on the citizens. I'm retired, I know I'm not the only one out there that is going to have problems with this, even though I try to conserve. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The city, in this case, is essentially the owner of the utility. And everybody who lives here is an, an owner of our water utility. For example, when you build a house here, you have to pay an access fee. You know, it's, it's part of the fees. I just built my house, and I don't know how many thousands of dollars I had to pay to buy into my share of the water utility. When it has expenses to pump the water uphill out of the aquifer under San Bernardino with electricity bills, you know, to pump it uphill so that it's in a pressurized, higher-level tank above the city, and then it drains by gravity under pressure into your house, if that cost goes up, let's say it goes up four and a half percent per year, and the City of Loma Linda is the only owner of that utility, I understand not wanting to pay four and a half percent extra, but if it costs four and a half percent extra for the city to do it, how would you propose that we balance our budget?
Well, the thing that is, how do you propose that I balance my budget? Because my electrical rates, if the cities go up, mine will go up four and a half percent. And now, I'm paying not only mine, but part of the cities.
And I understand, but remember, the city is the people. You are the city.
Well, the other gentleman suggested some ideas like bonds and things like that. I think the city needs to be a little more creative in finding some other ways to finance.
Well, we, I, I think we're, we're fairly creative, but my, my question is, a bond would be borrowing money to keep from raising the rates, which only adds interest to the cost of the increased service. So, I'm, I'm, what I'm, what I'm asking for is, I understand, I, I never like it when the rates go up on anything. I don't like inflation, I don't like any of that stuff. But when the cost to the city goes up, and we either pass it on, or we cut other services to compensate for it.
Okay, I realize.
What I'm asking is, what, what would you prefer?
Okay, I realize you have to raise the rate some, but four and a half percent, that, that's horrible. And that, I'm not a financial wizard, I don't know how to solve all these problems. I only have to solve mine. And like I said, I am retired, I'm a limited income, and I have to solve my problems.
Okay, thank you.
In, in practical dollars, if you heard the city manager, I think it, it, this comes down to the base rate of about a dollar and thirty a month, correct? For the base rate.
That's the first year.
I understand, that's the first level.
And it goes up that year, that much every year for five years. Okay, there's another comment from Cheryl. I always wonder if it's orate or orate.
Either way is correct. Hi, my name is Cheryl Orate, and I live here in Loma Linda. And I do object to the water increase being proposed as we don't have like just a quarter acre with a house on it. We live in the hills, and we have more property. Therefore, we have higher water bills. We have vegetation to fight off fire so that it would not burn and come down into the cities more. Our bills right now are running anywhere between three-hundred and fifty to four-hundred and fifty every two months. And with a four-point-five percent increase, that's going to impact us greatly as long, as well as other people that have the same as we do. Hopefully, the city has received other objections to the same letter that we received. And if, if these water rates are having to be raised because the homeowners of City of Loma Linda are utilizing more, then we need to look at a little bit more of what we're doing as a community. We're allowing tract homes to be built down the street, which is going to propose more water to be pushed into our zone. So, it's kind of like the people that live here now are having to pay forward every two months the water bill and pay the higher rates. So, if we need to consume more, then we shouldn't be building more. We should be taking care of the citizens that live in the City of Loma Linda here. And we should be watching what we're allowing to be built that's going to require more for people that are retired, like that lady and myself and my husband are retired. And, you know, you guys are going to do what you're going to do anyway, but I would like to see the bill also go from a two-month billing cycle to a one-month billing cycle because people are getting caught in that tier two, three, and four over the process of a sixty-day period versus a thirty-day period would knock the increase down. You wouldn't get caught up in those higher tiers. So, I mean, there's some stuff to be thinking about here as we go further and, you know, allowing other companies, tract homes and stuff to be built in our city. homes and stuff, to be built in our city limits. So, do you have any questions for me?
May I respond?
Definitely.
May I respond very fast?
Yes.
The, there's two, again, the, there's two components. There's existing resident that we pay our water bill every two months. When the new subdivision come into town, okay, they're required to pay a called development impact fee, which is the fee for water, the fee for sewer, for park. What those fees are for is for the, the service that the city already provided to the existing resident. For example, we already have built the water tank. We already built a pump to pump this water. Well, for the new group of people to come in and use those facility, they have to pay into those items that the existing resident already paid for and purchased it. That's the reason why they had to pay a development impact fee. This way, they become even with the existing resident. Then, in addition, after they stay here, they use water, then they pay the same water and sewer rate that you are paying.
So are you saying that the people that move into the housing tract down below here, that they're, they're paying out on a bond then?
No, ma'am.
No, they're buying, they're, see, we've, like I said before, we've invested millions and millions of dollars over the years as citizens of Loma Linda in our water system, water distribution and sewer drainage. They're hooking up to a system we've already invested in. So we charge them multiple thousands of dollars for the right to have, to buy their share of what we already invested in. So when new houses are constructed, there are development impact fees that say, "You need to pay this fee so that you can become an equal partner with those of us who've already invested so much money into our infrastructure." But when they come in, then they start also becoming rate payers, and then they pay, you know, the monthly fees, just like everybody else. So then we're all on an even basis. So when new houses come, you make a very good point. And there's a huge argument going on in California right now. It involves arguments between Southern California and Northern California because Northern California says, "You're taking all of our water. You're overbuilding Southern California." And, you know, there are, we're under pressure from the state and the regional government entities to build more, to build more and more and more and more. And we hold back on that because, you know, there's, for example, there's something called the Regional Housing Needs Assessment that comes out of the state and distributed through a regional entity called SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. And they put out a thing saying, "Loma Linda has its share of the new housing that, for the next 30 years, is X number of houses." And it can be thousands of units. And the whole time, whistling past the graveyard that there's no water for those housing units. So you're exactly right, and I appreciate your comments, because we've got this big struggle in California. We're putting a whole bunch of water using animals called humans into a desert, and there's no real plan for the water. So you're exactly right. It's going to become a massive crisis. And there are a lot of people who are really concerned about that, and you're just one of them. But there are a lot of paradoxes in the pricing of water. So you said, "If everyone's using more, then it's costing us more." Paradoxically, when people conserve, our revenue drops. So we actually, if everybody, let's say, everybody just suddenly overnight dropped their consumption by 50%, we'd have to raise the rates because we're not getting any revenue to support all this infrastructure that's going on. So there's, it's extremely complicated to set a rate for a city. But what we can tell you is, whatever rate we're charging, if we start accumulating tons of money and don't have to spend it to provide the water, the rates are coming down. If we don't raise them enough and the water, and the money just disappears and we have no money left to provide you water, we're going to raise the rates. So that's how we do it. We look at what the budget is, how much money we have. If we don't have enough money, we have to inch up on the rates. If we have too much money, believe me, we'd be the first ones to give you a cut.
Right. But if we're, if we're having to buy more water to sustain the people that live here now, how can we substantiate building a tract of homes where we're going to have to buy more water to substantiate them?
You're exactly right. We can't. But that's the situation we have, we find ourselves in. There are private landowners who want to build. There are regional housing requirements placed on us by the state. And then there, there's a reality that the water's running out. And you're exactly right, and we all struggle with that same thing. And you can come and give us a comment each time.
Maybe we ought to start pushing back against the state and our government is what we need to start doing and start thinking about the people that live here now.
The other thing to bear in mind is, where those new homes are going in, we're all orange groves.
Right.
Orange groves are very thirsty endeavors as well.
It was sad to see them go, though.
I'm sorry?
It was sad to see the orange groves all go.
I agree. I agree. No, I mean--
That's part of the beauty of Loma Linda.
I understand.
Or at least was.
But, but it became, it has become, the accountant that helps me with my taxes has managed the accounting for a number of orange groves. And he tells me, basically, "It costs more to produce oranges here now than, than you can actually earn by selling them." So it's, it's just the changing nature of the economy that we live in.
It is, but it's sad that we seem to want to jump the person in front of us all the time and--
I understand.
You know--
But it was the people that owned the orange groves that decided to sell them off, too.
Right.
Most of those that were owned--
But I'm sure they were enticed pretty good with pretty good purchases.
Yeah. Well, there's a family here in this, in this community called the Ramirez family that is doing everything they can to preserve orange groves. So there's, the orange groves that are left are, a lot of them belong to the Ramirez family, and we owe a huge debt to them because they haven't answered the call of profit to sell their property and do something else with it. So, you know, we can all, maybe we should have a big celebration of their family.
Would be nice, but if, again, if we could also, if we're going to look at the rate increase and it's going to go through, then let's look at going to a monthly billing cycle instead of every two months, like I said, where we get caught up in the higher tier payments.
Do we charge more for higher use? I think it's the same rate per 100 cubic feet the whole way from zero to infinity.
No.
Is it? Is it the same rate?
Tier 18 is 1.6.
Okay.
So--
The way it works is because, yes, yes, yes.
Saying that she can stay within tier one perhaps if it's a monthly bill. Once it goes to two months, then she's in tier two or three.
The tiers would be half--
Yes, that's correct.
The tiers would be half as big as what would happen because it, the still, same amount of revenue has to come in. So it's, it's basically the same.
Well, no, actually, because tier two is $1.92 100 cubic feet versus tier one is $1.43.
But I think the point is, if it were a one-month billing, the quantity you buy would be half as much to trip the new rate.
Well, I wouldn't go up into the tier two or three.
No.
Which is my higher pay.
It would be, instead of 0 to 18, it would be 0 to 9 at tier one.
It's calculated based on monthly utilization, but if it's, if it says 0 to 18 for a two-month utilization, the same schedule would say 0 to 9 for a one-month utilization.
Right. But if I'm paying every 60 days versus every 30 days, that's obviously going to put me into the higher tier per 100 cubic feet. Therefore, if I was billed out at 30 days, it's going to put me into a lesser amount of 100 cubic feet of water.
You're correct, but the tiers would trip a second tier at a lower point if we did it every month. And it would be exactly the same result.
I don't know how we would be the same result.
We would change the tier system. If you go by monthly, instead of 0 to 18, it becomes 0 to 9.
Right, but for the first--
And then for tier two will be from 9 to 25.
Right. For the first 10, it's $1.43. For the next 390 100 cubic feet, it's $1.92 per 100 cubic foot. For the, and then for tier three, the next 400 cubic feet are at $2.11. And then tier four is over 800 cubic feet at $2.29.
No, you look at the existing, you look, look at the bottom, what we propose. What we propose is single-family residential. Tier one is 0 to 18 at $1.60.
Right.
Tier two is 18 to 50.
100 cubic feet.
Correct, at $2.30 every two months.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if we change that to monthly billing, the tier one will be 0 to 9.
Oh, you--
And tier two will be 9 to 25.
So the tiers, the tiers are a projection of what a typical single-family home will utilize in two months. So if we went to a one-month, then the projection would be, how much would we anticipate a single-family home would use in one month? So the tier structure would be modified. They would be cut in half is what Mr. Taper is describing. It gets complicated, I know.
Okay.
But it would, you know, it, the bottom line is, if your water usage remained the same, it would not be less expensive for you to be billed on a monthly basis versus bi-monthly.
Because I would like to see my bill go down.
Yeah, I would, too.
Instead of, you know, being so high just to, for vegetation purposes.
Yeah.
So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We really appreciate it. One last comment, unless someone else wants to come along, is Lisa Sterling. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to kind of build on what my neighbors have been saying and note that as a homeowner, the tier structure that's being proposed is going to really hurt. I live on Hillcrest, 11573 Hillcrest. And although our lot isn't huge, it is a large lot. And as I look at the proposed volume rates alone, without all the other rate increases that will come into play, I believe that in the hottest, driest months of the year, our bill, should we not change our consumption, would go up about 40% or more by 2023. So when I read 4.5% increase in the letter, I had a hard time understanding where that came from. But one thing I noticed is that there are some rates that are going down. Sadly, I don't think any of those rates are going to apply to me. And I guess my question that I have at this moment, my biggest question is, why are some people experiencing lower rates or rate decreases? It almost feels like some homeowners, like myself, with 3/4-inch meters, are being targeted a bit for, for these needed income, the needed income in the city that we're being targeted a little bit heavier than maybe some other individuals in the city.
Yes. And the reason for that is, is the bigger the meter is, the more water you use. And so that's why we changed it to, instead of meter size, the flat rate for meter size, we changed it to the water consumption. Because the goal is, yes, we have to increase the revenue, but at the same time, we want you to conserve water. And that's why we geared toward the rate, the tier system than the fixed cost for water meters and--
I'm not sure I understood that. The bigger the water meter, the more you use? Is that what you said?
Well, the theory, let me, let me try it. The theory is that the bigger, okay, when you build a larger building, you typically put in a larger line tapping into the water source. So a 3/4-inch line is not going to run very fast, not much water at a time. So you put in a 1-inch or 1 and 1/2-inch or 2-inch line, intending to use more water than your average consumer. So this is just a shift in the way we're doing it to try to dissuade people who have large lines from using too much water. So we're decreasing their monthly flat rate for the larger hookup, but increasing the cost of the water that they take. So it's more of a disincentive to excess water use. In the past, the bulk of what we got from them was this higher monthly fee, flat rate--
I see.
--with not much water cost. And this is shifting the cost from the fixed rate to the utilization rate. So it's an attempt to discourage overutilization of water. And maybe before we can, before we finish with all of this, we can get a comment from our delegate to the third district of the San Bernardino Water District, who happens to be in the, in the audience. And he can help us with maybe some comment on what's happening with the water situation in this area. But you can see that it's a complex formula. And we had consultants that looked at this, and this is what they came up with. In the past, we had the old structure. Now we're planning to go ahead with the new structure. And I'm sorry to the extent that we didn't explain everything to everybody in our letter, but--
I tried. I didn't, after you commented, I went back and--
Does that, does that make sense?
Well, I guess if you're sitting with a 3/4-inch meter on your property like I have, it still is like, well, so I'm--
Why did yours go up?
Using less but paying more.
Yeah.
Well, the people who should be using less are going to get to pay less there, and we're all going to pay for volume use, big time. Some of us, big time. So it's, it doesn't, it doesn't feel quite right. And I guess another thing along that line, you notice on Exhibit A, the commercial rates, the flat rates for wastewater are decreasing while the residential are increasing. So again, if you're looking at a substantial increase from these rate, from this rate proposal package, it's a little unsettling to understand why there are people who are going to be better off, and maybe that's why there aren't more people protesting. There are some people who actually will potentially be a little better off than some of us in the city when it's all said and done.
Yeah, the other thing, and I appreciate that comment because I've noticed basically the same thing, but it's, it's what our consultants came up with based on, I guess, benchmarking the rates in other communities.
Commercial?
Yes.
See, the commercial, they don't use a lot of water because, because they don't have irrigation system. A lot of time is for, for commercial, they have, they have--
A sink, a sink or something.
Yes. So compared to residential, we use more water because we use for irrigation. And so, I'm not sure--
Yeah, I'm not sure the commercial affects the total revenue for the city very much.
I think the broader context of this is important, and that is, as the mayor has said, all cities, particularly in Southern California, are struggling with these issues. And as you've already heard, it is complex, which is why we bring consultants in to do benchmarking with best practices in other communities. And then we try to be eclectic and follow their advice to take the best of what's happening in other cities. But it, so this is not occurring within our city in a vacuum. We're trying to tag best practices other places because we all pay water bills. And, you know, it drives me crazy. I have a 98-year-old mother-in-law that lives with us, and she's convinced in the morning, the only way she can warm her hands is to run the faucet with hot water and then work her hands under the water for 15, 20 minutes. And I'm doing a dance outside the bathroom trying to move that along. So we all are concerned about water usage because of the drought conditions that we've experienced and, and the limited resources that we have. And yet, it's complex.
Yeah.
But, you know, we all are feeling the pain, but in the process, trying to be as fair as possible. But it's difficult to talk about because of all the different variables that are involved in trying to set water rates. So it's tough. I struggle to understand it, and I'm not sure I do even yet. But we are trying to follow best practice. I, I struggle to understand it, and I'm not sure I do even yet, uh, but we are trying to follow best practices.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering, we, we saw a graph showing our rates compared to other cities.
Yes.
Can you, can you show that?
Yeah, for, you see the water, you see, by the age you see, we are down here, we are a lot lower. That's the water sewer. It, it is the same thing, we are a lot lower.
Is that after the increases or before the increases?
Yeah, this is before, and this is after, we still lower it.
And is that the cumulative increase or just the one-year increase?
Well, if it's sitting down, also there may be an increase too, this is just one-year.
Okay.
And this is, this is serious business, because, uh,
I think.
Rather than for all of the right reasons, uh, that we should be conserving.
Your mic is on.
But in addition.
Turn your mic.
Sorry. Uh, it's serious business, because the state issues penalties, uh, if we don't meet certain standards. And our neighbors to the east, Redlands, was it two years ago or last year? I think it was two years ago.
Three years ago.
Got fined sixty thousand dollars or something like that, because they didn't meet the standards. So, you know, it, it, this is like a three-dimensional puzzle to try to figure out how to make this all work. But as you've already heard, you know, we're eager to be as fair as possible, to not overcharge, and what hurts you hurts me just as much. So it's, it's just kind of the, the new standard we live in with the, with, uh, living in the desert of Southern California.
And let me add one more thing, I, I say this, I hate to say this, but I also live in town. And before I had sent this out to all the residents, I went through this with my wife. And she's the first one to complain, so.
That's old standard.
And, 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 and so, at the beginning, the consultant asked for this much, I said, no, you can't. And, and how about this, and we, I really try to, to do my best to, to make sure that the resident and a lot of people that, that I know that live in town are comfortable with our rate increase, so. And at the same time, I have to balance a budget, and, and, and so, and I do, I do understand with, with all your comment, and, and, and I really do, and I want to let you know that, so.
Well, I definitely appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and just one comment on that, as Jarrett mentioned, the, the budget he's balancing is the water budget. That this is not a profit center for the city as a whole, or the general fund. Uh, these funds have to carry their own, uh, weight by collecting enough money to provide the service that is necessary to the community. So there is a legal limit on how much we can charge, we cannot exceed the cost of providing the service, and that's what the consultants work so hard to calculate, and, uh, to build in, uh, to the rate increases, uh, the projected costs that will be faced by the city to provide, to continue to provide the high level of service that the city does.
Yeah, the only thing worse than higher rates is no water, at any, at any price. So thank you for your comments, if you have anything further, let us know.
Just one, one little point here. I do appreciate the need to conserve, and definitely, I hope that my water bill will reflect our efforts, um, in the coming months. Um, but my last little point, as we talk about raising revenue for the city to meet real expenses, um, in Exhibit A, and I know I already brought this up, that the commercial flat fees are going down while the residential are going up. But also for some businesses, the commercial use volume charges are also going down. So there are businesses that will pay less over the coming months than they have been paying. And that's a real head-scratcher, when I know that we need to be raising revenue to meet, um, new charges that are coming our way on wastewater management. So look, for example, at Class Four Laundry Mortuary, their volume use is going down, is less in twenty-twenty-three than it is, um, currently. And also their flat fee will go down as well. So I just point that out, I know you had consultants, as you said, I believe you, but I don't quite understand why some businesses are getting such a nice break, and not going to contribute to the increased costs that we all need to be helping with.
Yeah, all, well.
I think it's more.
All I can say is it's probably the benchmarking aspect of it. I don't, it, I, you know, I, I question it too, so you made a good point.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not the one who did the study, but presumably the, the consultants were very aware of this issue, and, uh, the commercial cannot subsidize the residential, that's one of those, the cost of providing the service to each category is what the consultant attempts to meet, in, in fine-tuning the rates from time to time. Uh, so it's, it's a difficult process, but it, uh, we can't just sock it to one category of user in order to subsidize a different category.
Yeah, I guess that's what my concern is, I feel
It looks like it did.
A little bit like I might be subsidizing.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I think the consultant, if they were here, would probably say, well, they've been subsidizing you in the past, and they're undoing that with this rate change. That's, that's presumably the reason why the rates changed, but I don't know, I'm not gonna.
Now, we're not voting on this tonight, can, we have asked consultants to be here for responding?
What I can do is, I can, I can, I can check the report for you and get you to respond back. But we only have one laundry mat here in town, which is one across the street, and we don't have any, uh, mortuary, so.
There was one mortuary, but it's, it's now a, it's now a university classroom. It used to be Hughes Mortuary, across the street from the hospital.
Okay, thank you.
So, and it's, and if, if you saw some of the other rate structures, it's really amusing, the categories they have that are like from the nineteenth century. Yeah, this isn't the only one that has weird categories like laundry and mortuary, there's, there's other things, like, um, the, the road, uh, use fee has categories like, you know, tattoo parlor, or, yeah, just weird things that you just wouldn't expect to be on a, but anyway. I just find it amusing, so, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other comments from anybody? It was all very good comments, um, and like some of you said, sometimes we have to do what we have to do, but we'll, we'll see what the, uh, city council now thinks of all of this. Any comments?
Well, I have several. One is, it's very clear we dropped the ball in communicating what we're doing, so you all understand. Um, we had a very lengthy presentation, uh, at the last council meeting, it lasted well over an hour, if I recall, where we went through a litany of data and information, and many of us asked questions about why are we doing this and all that. Like Dr. Daly and Dr. Rizby said, it's a very complex issue that even we are mystified sometimes as to how they come up with some of the rates. However, it is so complex, we spend thousands of dollars for someone to actually look at this and make sure that we do it in a fair and applicable way. But I, I, I think that if all of you were there, you probably would have had a better understanding of what we're having to do. Having said that, I think, in retrospect, we could have done a better job of informing you of the fact that we are going to have that hearing, so you all could have been here and heard for yourself, other, rather than having us explain it to you. So I, I, I agree with all of you that we've done a terrible job, and Mr. Gepenka makes a very good point, the letter I saw makes no reference to why we're raising it, they just said we're raising it, even though we spent almost an hour discussing with the fact that we're raising it because we don't have enough money to improve the infrastructure, and we're raising it because we're going to force you to, uh, conserve water. You know, this is the way to do it. Um, for some of you, you actually, your rates are actually going to go down, because, uh, some of you will actually have no choice but to start conserving water, unfortunately, believe it or not. Uh, now, I, I, I have another comment, but I, I want to get some clarity on the rates. Um, so, starting in March, if you're tier three, it's three, three dollars and twenty-four cents, correct? So the following year, does that go to three thirty-nine, or do I pay an additional three thirty-nine on top of the three twenty-four?
No, no, it's going to three thirty-nine.
From three twenty-four?
Correct.
Correct, so having said that, it's incorrect to say this is going up twenty percent, okay? Now, um, I wish I had my bill here, but I think the last water bill I paid was somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and thirty dollars, and I live on a quarter-acre home. And that bill, it included wastewater, flat rate, and trash, right? And what is my rate for trash a month? Nineteen dollars? I estimated fifteen, so I did the math on my own personal, and I have, there's three of us in our family. With this increase, I'm going to be paying an extra five dollars and about seventy cents for every two months. Which means that over, uh, one year, I'm paying an additional thirty dollars, you know, thirty or forty dollars. So that's the impact that's affecting me. So I know that we get all caught up into the fact that it's going up by four percent, but if we look at the actual numbers, the amount, it's not as significant. That doesn't take into account the fact that every dollar counts, but I think that's something that should be worth noting. Now, one other thing that we all face here, and we've had many discussions about this, Dr. Daly is right, about water and conservation, we've had people report to us about, you guys are not doing enough to conserve water. It's been a major, major crisis, we have members of our council that sit on water board, uh, water, um, advisory boards to be made aware of all the issues in, in California. And sadly, there's so many issues in life that sometimes we don't really pay attention to certain things, but here's, in a nutshell, what's happening in Sacramento, okay? There's a huge battle between for water, okay? And like Mayor Rizby said, the people in Northern California saying, hey, you guys in Southern California are using too much. The reality is there's plenty of water, there really is. But the north controls it, and they want to charge us more for giving it to us. So the politicians in Sacramento are saying, you guys in California want to develop and grow, you're going to pay for it. And you're wondering, well, 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 if there's all this water, why are they not using it? Well, there's a lot of environmental issues, where they're doing everything they can to prevent water from moving down here easier. There, there's proposals of thirty, forty billion dollars of trying to improve the process of moving water into California, but there's a big battle about who's going to pay for it. Now, the folks in Sacramento are saying, not only do I want you guys to use less water, and I know Dr. Daly may get offense for this, but I'm going to do everything I can to tax you to the point where I'm going to start charging you for driving your car, not, not for gas, just for driving. And if you're not paying enough, I'm going to, I'm going to raise it just enough so all of you could be just like Europe, live closer together, get on buses and trains, and ride your bikes. And they're doing it very slowly and systematically, they are. You have no idea how much we, we fought for years to ensure that as we develop as a community, we build houses where we built, we felt that we had space between ourselves. Versus Sacramento was, and with their developer friends, were pushing really hard, no, 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 no. The, I, I know that a lot of people are upset about the developments that are happening on Mission and that area. As bad as they are now, they would have been ten times worse. You would have been looking at twenty-five hundred apartments, not beautifully landscaped homes. So we, as a community, are trying to do as much as we can to try to accommodate our own taste, while at the same time balancing the issues that we're dealing with from a state level. That doesn't always satisfy the fact that we, at, having a rate increase. But I, I think it's important for, for those who are actually paying attention, like some of you who have taken the time to come and express your viewpoints, to kind of understand some of the issues we're dealing with, not to excuse what we're doing it, but there's part, there is kind of a method to our madness. And as much as we don't like to do it, we have no choice. And it's like the attorney said, it's a very complicated process where there is, uh, you, some of you mentioned bonds. Well, there were bonds taken out to improve our infrastructure, we're paying those back as we speak, okay? Part of the rate increase requires we have a minimum reserve for improvements. If we don't meet those, we default on our bond obligations. So some of these things are for paying for things that happened in the past, which needed to happen, because all of us have very good water, healthy water, not always, you know, to the standards we would like, but in, uh, and I don't want to spend too much time comparing ourselves, but there's places in other countries that don't even want you to wash your face with it. I mean, our water here, it may not taste good, but it's healthy water, and it's water that we can live off of. Um, for our family, we've noticed the increase in rates because of the change of meters, and we started doing everything we can to conserve. Um, we've changed our lawns, so we don't spend as much money on water, and unfortunately, some people will have to do that. But, um, anyway, I think I went on too long, but I just wanted to give you my input as to kind of what we've been going through, and I'm hoping that I may help you explain some of the issues that we've been dealing with.
Just two things, I just wanted to remind the public that there is on the website, you can go back and look at the city council previously, where we had our, um, consultants here, where we went over for, like you said, an hour or something. So the info's there, if you want to see what they had to say at that time. Um, secondly, can they come to the next time and answer questions of people?
For a fee, I'm sure.
It, it'll cost money and make the rates go up maybe. But do you think that would be valuable, would you like to come back and talk, have them talk to you?
No, they're bored.
And ask the questions, maybe not, okay?
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, what's the pleasure of the council? The.
To go through two.
Yeah, I can, I can close the public hearing also, everybody's done? Okay, I'll close the public hearing with the ceremonial clap of the hammer. Now we move to discussion on these two council bills. They're proposing to be a first reading, setting a second reading for the next meeting in February.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, did you formally open the public hearing on?
Yes, I did.
Item?
Yes, I.
Number four?
I, I appended it.
Okay.
Yes.
Just want to make sure it was noted in a minute.
Yes.
Thank you.
So what's the pleasure of the council? Well, the, well, this is, but, but what we have to do is move that this be counted as the first hit reading and set the second reading for each of these bills.
So moved. Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, and, uh, we can take these in a combined way?
If the clerk is comfortable with that, there's, they are related, but actually.
They're two separate, we don't want to take it one at a time.
Okay, then, then what's, is the mo, does the motion apply to item number three?
Motion is for Council Bill zero dash two-one-nine dash zero-one.
And a second, is for that? Okay, then, um, this just requires a standard voice vote, right? It's only the, okay. Okay, then, uh, any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no, that's unanimous, that's approved. So it will not go into effect until after the second reading, um, which is a month from now, and then another, is it thirty days for ordinances? Yeah, okay. Now we need to deal with item number four, Council Bill O-dash-two-thousand-nineteen dash zero-two.
All right, I'll make the parallel motion for that, Bill.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no, that is approved unanimously. Uh, so that will be taken up again on February twelfth, both of those items.
I just want to make a general comment, um, go ahead, did you want it?
I just had, is there going to be another notice?
No, the notice is just the one time, is there a requirement to, um, were, were we supposed to comment on the objections and the fact that the objections failed, and, or did we do that adequately?
I was just, uh, confering with the city manager, if.
If, um, upon approval, the ordinance is effective thirty days after adoption, which would make it March...
Fourteen.
Yeah, so if the calculations require it to be effective March first, we could have a second meeting this month and complete the consideration at that time.
Otherwise, it just gets delayed by a month?
Well, it gets delayed by two months because that's when the billing cycle goes. Is that a problem? So it'd be effective March fourteen instead of March one?
Right.
Okay, then we can move forward.
I just wanted to make a general comment. Some of your, some of you've come here before and you've, you've stated your viewpoint. Just wanna let you know that one of the things that our council is doing versus other councils as far as public comment, by law and by practice, normally what they'll do is everybody gets three minutes and express your viewpoints, and there is no back and forth between the council and the staff. It doesn't actually happen in any of the cities. So we're actually the only city that allows for residents to actually talk back and forth. Technically by law, you give your three minutes, and it's actually even, not even San Bernardino does it work, every, everybody puts in their three minutes at the very beginning of the meeting for all the items, and then you wait and you just sit and watch. So just wanna let you know that we're doing everything we can to try to be more engaging with all of you in explaining. None of the other councils take the time because technically all the explanation, the way it works is that in order to run meetings more efficiently, it's, you guys are a very good audience of various spectacle, talkable, but there's some issues where if we go back and forth, it became very, very intense because some people become very passionate about where they stand. So I just wanna let you know that we're more accommodating than most cities in being able to address this. You'll never see the dais ask questions of the council, of the people, and the people ask questions of us, of us being able to answer. Most of the discussion usually happens between us and the staff, so I just wanna kinda let you know that.
Yeah, and I once presented to the Los Angeles City Council, and they gave one minute per speaker, and the councilmen were just, and women, were just wandering around in the back, not even paying any attention to the speakers. It's kind of interesting. You can actually watch that one on the internet, they, they stream it live. If you wanna see politicians disinterested in their, in their public, Los Angeles is a great example of that. So our next item is the consent calendar.
I have a correction on number nine, but that...
Go ahead.
Yes, on, on item number nine is for appropriation request for a hundred thousand dollars from the park development impact fee to park capital fund. Under financial impact, it said appropriate a hundred thousand dollars from general fund, fund balance, and it's supposed to be the park development impact fee fund balance, not general fund. That's my correction.
On number eight, what exactly does that ninety-three thousand dollars go for?
Deficit.
Deficit?
It costs that much more to provide the service than the revenue.
No, that's, um, we, we have one full-time person on city payroll that does IT support, connected community work, and then we contract with Alethia to provide network engineering, the higher level support, that way they do on a contract basis as we call people in. And then we have one full-time person that is an Alethia employee, who's actually in the booth back here tonight, that matches our guy so that we only carry one full-time and one's a contract employee.
But it's still expense beyond revenue.
The operate, we don't cover our debt, and we don't cover our debt, our debt service and the loan, we do, and depreciation, we do cover the month-to-month operation barely. So, um, on the books, directly, no, it does not cover it. From a cash flow point, we do cover it.
I've looked at a number of IT budgets over the years, this is, we're getting a bargain.
Depends on what's being used, I mean, who actually uses it? I guess from my standpoint, I look at it and think, well, maybe there's just two, the most recent housing tracts get to use it, nobody else does, but maybe there's a lot more going on than I know with that.
How many customers do we have?
We have about four hundred and fifty customers. About four, four to four hundred and fifty goes up and down as they sign up and drop. And you are correct, we are connected to the newer houses, not the old ones. So, and as, as new houses get built, they are required to, to have that connection, not necessarily to pay for the service that we compete in the market for that. So, um, part of the new construction theoretically will help the program by providing more customers and more connections. But, um, no, people like you, actually, the mayor was lucky, we did some construction in front of his house, and, uh, and he paid for the remainder of that to go to his house. He is one of our customers. The rest of us, we do not live in an area that is serviced.
Funny how that happened.
Actually, Councilman Duper is in that area too.
I had to, I had to cut a five-hundred-foot trench at the cost of twenty-five thousand dollars to put that line in, thank you very much. I also got an electrical line in the same trench, but it's a lot of money.
I wanna go back to item number nine. So, I know that earlier, Mr., the gentleman talked about the Adobe House and the fact that he wanted us to spend more money on fixing it up. If I hear him correctly, and we couldn't really talk about it because technically, legally, it's not an item on the agenda, but I'm gonna attach your item to this item so we can talk about it now. So help me understand something. Was it his proposal that we move the Adobe House or just fix it up?
The, the Adobe House is not able to be moved. Part of what's happened with that, that house was attached to the groves that J.J. Ramirez Company was managing for us.
Okay.
When they stopped managing that grove six, seven months ago, they had a caretaker that lived in that house and has been inhabiting that for, from what I understand, about twenty years. So they moved out, that's the first time the house became vacant and we had access to it. So in the last six months, what we've done is what Jarb said, we've, we've tried to secure the property, we're in the process of cleaning it up, and now we're in the process of figuring out a way to maintain and restore it. That's not something that happens in a week or a month, that's a long-term, like you see at Heritage Park, that's a long-term prospect.
So that means that, right now, the property belongs to the former RDA?
That is correct.
Which eventually would be sold off? And in that sale, there can be a condition, which we did similar to other houses, which is if, when you buy this land, you're gonna take this house and you're gonna move it, and that's what happened to the other houses?
Actually, that house, because an Adobe structure, the way it's built...
Will not be able to be moved, okay.
It's not able to be moved.
But we can make a condition that it be preserved for historical preservation, okay?
Correct. One of the conditions of approval will be that that parcel is carved out and deeded to the city.
Okay.
Um, for historical purposes.
So, the, item number ten relates to which specific house that got moved and were redoing?
Is, is the Heritage Park, which is the one that...
I understand where the park is, but which house specifically? Where was this house located?
So, so this infrastructure will be for, put in the, the water, sewer, electrical, and gas light, all the infrastructure to go further back.
So it's not for a particular house?
Not, not yet.
We currently have one house that's sitting behind the existing two.
Correct.
That, that's not, basically, it's shelled out and wrapped up to protect it.
I follow you, okay.
So that house is not connected to anything, and then we have additional pads because as area D and the area on the east side of California ultimately develops, there are historic properties that need to be moved there, so we wanna create that infrastructure so when they're moved that they can become usable properties.
And the existing houses that are in the Heritage Park, when we rehab them, we help pay for some of that from our park fund?
Yes.
And so the goal is that as we move forward, that we can allocate funds to look at fixing the Adobe House as well?
Yes.
Correct, and make it some sort of museum or some other uses. But right now, we are lucky to have two tenant to utilize the two existing structures.
Which helps offset...
Help pay for the maintenance of the park facility and kinda keep an eye on the park facility.
And the gentleman makes a very good point about the house. Mr. Schiff was here some time ago and he gave us historical background, and a lot of people don't realize that this whole valley was settled in seventeen seventy-six, the year the, our country was founded. So the history behind all of San Bernardino, it started in La Molinda. We, we are literally the oldest, you know, residents, so to speak. Of course, part of that had the mission, which kinda came beforehand, but still, we are literally the first place that was settled, not only just by the Indians, but the, the, the Spanish settlers, but later the folks who came from back east, so, anyway, thank you. Uh, did you need a, a motion for the consent calendar?
Definitely. Come on forward if you wanna...
You wanna comment on, on number nine?
We want everyone at home to hear you too, so, the microphone.
Jill Frank again. It's not entirely true that that Adobe can't be moved, it can be moved. It's been done in Santa Clarita, I've been doing some research, there are specialty movers that can move it. It can also be taken apart brick by brick, which is not that difficult because what holds it together is more Adobe mud, and it can be sawed apart with a sawzall, transported and then take, put back together. It's not a big structure. It's thousand to twelve-hundred square feet, pretty much rectangle. It also can be encased in smaller sections because it has lath and plaster against it now, which also is a supporting element. You can, you can sandwich it with plywood and reinforce that with two-by-fours and move it in smaller sections, I wouldn't say any bigger than four-by-four. But I have been in contact with some movers, it's a very delicate operation. It could also be something that, uh, the community could get involved or the school kids, putting it back together. Lift the roof off and then move the Adobe, because it has no foundation. It's, it's, somebody's put a wood floor in it, but it was actually a dirt floor. Thank you.
Okay, I heard a motion for the consent calendar, is there a second?
Who made the first? Oh, I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the consent calendar, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Item number ten is a fairly consequential item, CalPERS unfunded liability discussion by our city manager.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad you stayed because now you know where the money going to and why we're doing this. This is the CalPERS pension unfunded accrue liabilities or UAL. The little background is the city is contracted with California Public Employees Retirement System or CalPERS to provide a retirement pension benefit for its employees, similar to the most California community. The city currently have four retirement pension plan with CalPERS. One is called Classic Miscellaneous, which is two percent at fifty-five. Second is Public Employees Pension Reform Act or PEPRA Miscellaneous, two percent at sixty-two. Classic Safety is three percent at fifty-five, and PEPRA Safety at two-point-seven at fifty-seven. Unfortunately, with the economy downturn, underestimated rising costs and CalPERS actuary assumption that change and changes the funding in, in unfunded pension liability are subject escalated at alarming rate. The League of California City published a study that was done in January two thousand eighteen and said that the cost for, for this unfunded liability can double over the next seven years. So, the, the city have implemented couple, uh, cost strategies since two thousand nine, including reorganizing the operation, reducing the, the staff level, and negotiating with the employees to pay for their shares of CalPERS contribution. And in two thousand twelve, the state passed the PEPRA, which is the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, which took effect in January of, of January first, two thousand thirteen to, to reduce that, that retirement formula for a new hire. That's why they call it PEPRA Miscellaneous and PEPRA Public Safety, only in our case, Fire Department. In May of two thousand fourteen, the city council adopted a revised fund balance policy established that a committed fund balance of three-point-five million dollar with the goal to increase it to three months of general fund operation expenditures. Our current general fund operation expenditure is about one-point-seven million dollar per month. So for three months, we need a total reserve of about five-point-one million dollars. In October of two thousand seventeen, the city council approved a transfer of two million dollar from a general fund unassigned fund balance to be assigned for the unfunded liability fund balance. And the reason for that, at the beginning, we thought that by setting aside two million dollar, eventually we're gonna go pay for the unfunded liability. So, as of June of two thousand eighteen, our general fund unrestricted, which is included committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balance, a total of fifteen-point-four million dollars, and is included between committed fund balance of five-point-five million dollars. The committed fund is like for our equipment replacement program and so forth. So, what we, what I did was I contacted CalPERS actuary and, and asked them a couple question. First, every year, they send us a report, give us the status of, a projection of what our annual contribution will be, a payment will be. So that will be the red line, okay? So for next fiscal year, fiscal nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, our contribution, our annual payment would be one-point-one million dollars. Fiscal, fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, it's one-point-three, one-point-five, one-point-six, one-point-seven, and one-point-eight and so forth. This is annual. If you can notice, is, is increased at a pretty steep slope. So I asked them, what if, okay, one, one thing I skipped. Currently, we owe them about sixteen million dollars. So the city owe CalPERS sixteen million dollar in unfunded liability at the interest rate of seven-point-two-five percent. So, my question to them is, what if we pay them, pay them that down, seven million dollar, and that will be this green graph? So that we reduce our annual payment to, for first year is nine forty-four thousand dollar, and the second year is nine, ninety-one thousand dollar. And if we pay down at eight million dollars, and that will be this blue, kinda dark blue line right here, and the purple is if we pay down at nine million dollars, okay? You follow me so far? Okay, so the, the idea is, is like similar to you owe the credit card. If, if you owe money to the credit card, you pay seven and a quarter percent interest on your credit card, and for your savings account, right now, the city earned about a one-point-eight percent in interest, uh, return on our investment. So, with this projection, if, if the city pay down about seven million dollar in additional unfunded liability payment, that will result in a saving of eleven-point-four-eight million dollar over the thirty-year period. If we pay them eight million dollars, okay, a total saving of interest, in the interest saving about twelve-point-nine million. And if we pay them down nine million, interest saving of approximately fourteen-point-three-seven million dollar over a thirty-year period. So, what, what I would like to recommend to the city council is to pay down eight-point-five million dollars. And the reason is, is eight-point-five instead of nine million is because you remember about two, three months ago, we already, the council already approved to pay them half a million... we already, the council already approved to pay them half a million dollars about three months ago. So, how is this eight-point-five million, where the money coming from? Is the general fund about six-point, six-point-six million dollar and come from a committed three-point-five and a sign of two million, the one that we set aside the money for, and unassigned of about one million, that's total. And then, in addition to that, we have to pay out of the sewer fund for five-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollar, and the water fund out of about one-point-four million. And the reason we had to pay out of the water and sewer fund is because we have employees that, that get paid out of the capital, that pay out of the, uh, the water and sewer fund, is enterprise fund. Are you with me so far? So, that will make up the eight-point-five million dollars. Now, oops, that part of the, the section ten A, and, and, and ten B is, is for city to adopting the city general fund emergency contingency, uh, to reduce that instead of three-point-five million down to, to two million dollars. And, and ten B, ten C, is right now, the sewer fund, we don't have this half million dollars to, to pay, uh, Calpers. So, and, and under item ten C is we had to borrow the money from general fund into the sewer fund to pay for this debt. So, hopefully, if the city council at the next meeting approve the rate increase, we can use part of the rate increase to, to, for sewer, to help pay for this debt.
So, the five-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars that we're loaning the sewer fund from the general fund, is that taken in item number one? Or that, does that mean that we're actually taking seven million dollars out of the general fund? You're saying that we're getting five-hundred-and-twelve thousand, but the sewer fund doesn't have it, and it's taking a loan from the general fund?
Correct.
So, technically, we're taking seven million dollars from the general fund, okay? And then, how do we propose that we pay the sewer fund back, over what period?
Is, is, is the money, hopefully, the money will come from the, the, this, this rate increase?
So, over period, how long, that's my question?
We didn't identify a specific term, but in the rate, there is, uh, part of the rate would include the payment of the unfunded annual payments for the, the Pers contribution. So, by paying it ahead of time, we're actually saving money on the interest and stuff. So, it would come as the rate were collected, as increases were collected. We didn't identify a specific term.
Time, I see.
Just as it, as the rates increase, we will.
So, it could take twenty, thirty years?
And we are charging the life rate on that.
Okay.
So, we're charging, the, the sewer fund is paying one-point-whatever?
Eight percent.
Eight percent?
Yeah.
To the general fund for borrowing this money?
Yes.
Which is very cheap rate for a loan.
As opposed to the seven percent it would be charging by Pers.
And I present this to the, to the budget committee a couple months ago, and they, they, they approved, kind of approved the idea, so. To tonight, I request that the city council approve items ten A, B, and C, and repay the Calpers and, and, uh, pay, pay down our debt, this is what it is.
So, it's kind of funny. We just made a statement a while ago that the water and the sewer fund is a separate thing, and we have to make sure we do everything by that. I mean, if I was sitting out there, I would look at this and say, so we just approved a rate increase, but now we're gonna turn and funnel this over to Calper?
No.
I'm just telling what I would think if I was sitting there.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I could, I could see you all looking at that, kind of frowning.
Yes, is, is, is part of operation.
Let's go over this a little more to make sure we understand exactly what's happening. Are there, are there other funds, like, like the sewer and water fund that aren't part of the general fund, that you're doing the same thing to?
Is, is enterprise fund. So, we have water, sewer.
All, all the funds that are suffered from the general fund, they're getting assessed some sort of money to, to help pay for this?
Correct.
For employees who are working within those funds, so to speak.
Correct, that's, that's part of operation, yes.
So, is this, is this division of investment based on a pro rata budget basis? Or based on the number of employees assigned, the number of FTEs assigned?
The employee allocation.
Okay. And is it based, is it based on the salary rates multiplied by the number of employees? For example, let's say the sewer fund has a bunch of people working for minimum wage. I know it's not correct, but just for analytic purposes, they would get the same amount charged per employee as, as a fund that had people making ten million dollars a year?
It's, it's based on salary contribution, though.
Okay, so it's not FTEs, it's actual, it's actual retirement liability?
Yes.
That's being assigned, okay.
Yes.
So, in other words, we're charging the water fund a certain portion of the payment obligations that those people are contributing to helping run our water system, for lack of a better word. I guess my question is, the one-point-four million is over a period of how much time? How long, how much did it take us to accumulate that amount of money to help pay for those people? I mean, if you have, how many FTEs? I mean, we can do the math right now. How many FTEs are you assigning to the water fund?
It is, how, how, it's percentage.
Okay, so it's a percentage?
Right.
So, how much are we, in, in the, in the water fund, how much are we allocating for employees that help run the water system?
Okay.
Approximately?
About six percent.
Six percent?
Right.
Okay, so, this is amount that has been accumulated for probably ten, twenty years, then? I mean, our water?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, for water is sixteen-point-four-one percent.
Sixteen, okay.
Yes, yes.
And we?
Sewer is six percent.
Total, we get how, how much revenue from all the water bills a year?
I, I don't have it in front of me.
Each billing cycle is about, well, there's two, two different cycles, and probably average about, um, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand on average, per, per cycle.
So, that's about ten million, uh, no. Yeah, ten million a year. No, sorry. That's three million, three million a year.
So, what, what you're saying is that of our employee pension liabilities that's unfunded, sixteen percent of it belongs to the water fund?
Correct.
Six percent to the sewer fund?
Correct.
For a title of, total of about twenty-two percent?
Correct.
Of our total pension liability is for people who maintain water and sewer?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and, and Diana was, actually, she, she actually broke it down to, to different account and, and.
Yeah, so it's very, the accounting is correct, to the penny.
Yes, to the penny, yes.
And it looks like I just did a quick math. It, it's more about four years' worth of technically, um, uh, employee costs associated to sewer fund that we're moving or, so we're not taking money from water to improvement, we're taking money that we would have paid for the employees who help run the water fund?
Correct.
To help offset the pension obligations?
Correct.
People understand that, okay?
Correct.
And I'm impressed with that extra zero in line one A. That's, it's got a bulging zero there in the middle.
Oh, yeah, okay, so it's three-point-five million.
Thirty-five?
No, no, it's three-point-five.
The commas are off.
Yes, it's extra zero, I, that's my fault, so. Any question, any more question for me?
And I asked you this earlier, but I want to make sure people understand this as well. There's a number of cities that are actually gonna go bankrupt because of this. I mean, literally.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not gonna mince words, we could be one of them too. And there's, I mean, Calpers is saying that our unfunded liability will double in seven years. So, if we're paying back half of it, or a little more than half, that means we still have about seven million left. That means that becomes fourteen million, so then the question is, what do you, what do we do in seven years? At that point, we only have seven million dollars in reserves. So, we as a council, whoever's sit, seated here or in the staff, is gonna have to make a decision. Do we help pay for fire, police, and everybody else, or do we cut people's pensions? It's gonna be simple as that. Or the city goes bankrupt, and we figure out a way to do it the way San Bernardino did. But that's the situation we're in, and if the economy takes a tumble and the stock market goes down, California is in big, big trouble. I don't think people understand that. They don't. We're, we're, we're at the very edge of a major crisis regarding unfunded pension liabilities. And every city has been kind of kicking the can down the road. We're fortunate enough to buy ourselves time, but in seven years, we may be having another crisis. Some of the cities are not gonna survive seven years. They're gonna go under, so.
Well, on that buoyant note, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, we're talking about B and C, correct? Can we do them all in one, or do we need the council bills identified?
Well, I, they are clearly connected. You can do it as one motion, referencing the three separate items and the council bills as part of your motion.
Okay, then I will, uh, move ten A regarding the appropriate funding authorizing payment to Calpers. Ten B, council bill R dash two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-two. And ten C, council bill R dash two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-three. All be approved.
I'll move it, second?
There's a second, okay. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Okay, uh, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, nope. That passes unanimously.
And then, just a general comment, even though it seems like we went over this really quickly, where we just allocated eight and a half million dollars out of our general fund, a reserve that's taken us ten years to accommodate. We've had multiple meetings on this issue in the, in, in the budget committee and over the years, and with staff. So, there's been significant discussion on whether this was the best move. We looked at many other alternatives to try to save our general fund, and we found that this was really the only way to do it. It's not one that we're happy with at all, because it's like some of you suddenly getting a huge payment, and the only way you're gonna pay it is to dip into your savings and pay it. And it's, it's not a situation we want to be in as a city, because, you know, but anyway, it is what it is.
Okay, so that concludes item ten. Now, we have reports of councilman.
I have one thing. My monthly rant about the coyotes, um, while we're sitting here, I got a notification that coyotes loose near my house. However, I would like to congratulate on your control of the skunk population. I don't see any skunks around, or raccoons, or any other of the prey is down.
Somebody, somebody?
The coyotes are here, so it's like we, we have one or the other, it looks like.
Somebody took out a raccoon in the middle of Barton Road or Anderson Street this morning.
Yeah.
It was, there's no song about dead raccoons in the middle of the road, but, but there was one.
I had some comments, okay. Uh, just general comments, and sometimes I, I, I mean, Dusty and I talk often, but I don't get to see Dr. Daley or Dr. Leonard often, so it's kind of, just to inform you a little bit about some of the things that we're dealing with. And this is kind of more an appreciation of Mayor Rigsby and his efforts, but I don't know how many of you know, but we've had elections in November that radically changed media landscapes, including the cities of Colton, County, Assembly, and the city of San Bernardino. And, uh, believe it or not, all those things actually affects us in different ways. And so, for me personally, I'm very much involved with San Bernardino International Airport, and I wanted to express my deep appreciation to, uh, Mayor Rigsby, because he's been assisting me in trying to, um, continue to work with that airport. One of the issues we're having is San Bernardino is in very challenging financial shape. There's no doubt about it. And the only way to get that, uh, city going is to get the airport going. That's one of the main ways to do it. We, as a city, sit on the airport board, and that's how we're involved. So, with this last election, um, board members radically changed because of the election. So, in the end, I was the only one left there, and I'd been there for eight years with one other council member. So, Mayor Rigsby's been working with the new mayor, Colton, so we had a meeting with him to try to start bringing him up to speed with what we've been doing at the airport. I had about a two-and-a-half hour meeting with the new mayor of, um, San Bernardino to explain to him about what we're doing at the airport. Uh, Mayor Rigsby had another three-hour meeting with him to further talk about some of the things that we can do, cities to city. We have a good relationship with the city of Colton as well, with our fire department, so it's important that we keep in touch with them. Um, Mayor Rigsby and myself were involved in helping draft an agreement with, um, it's crazy how what we do here impacts the rest of the world, but we have an agreement with Abu Dhabi airports, which is in the UAE. Uh, we have an, and they're government entity. That agreement is now allowing, believe it or not, for county fire folks from the county of San Bernardino, city of San Bernardino, to travel to Abu Dhabi and help train some of their firefighters, which ultimately come back to San Bernardino trained with us. At our airport, we have, uh, training fire facilities for firefighters that deal with airports. The reason that's important for us, for a number of reasons, is that we have had to incur an extra seven-hundred-thousand dollars' worth of firefighting expenses at our airport. We had an agreement with the existing system that expired. We have to generate revenue, and the way to do it is to do, train these firefighters. So, this agreement that we helped put together allows us to do that. But in addition, that we had relationships with the UAE government that is helping them develop some other things that we not really can talk about in public, that's assisting them in a way in which then they're coming back and assisting us. Without getting too much into the weeds, we're doing a lot of cargo and diplomatic flights between ourselves and that country. There's a lot of things happening all over the world that we're a part of, believe it or not. At our airport, there's stuff that's getting moved here from, to all over the world and coming to us. And so, we have a role to play in that. And I just wanted to show my appreciation to Dr. Rigsby, because he's really helped me a lot. He's been attending multiple meetings, it's a very complex issue. I had a meeting today with supervisor Kurt Hagwin, who's the Board of Supervisors Chair now. He's also the Chair of the Airport Authority for Ontario. And we're working with them in collaboration to try to see how both of our airports can further expand aviation, because airports are critical for economic development. Ontario fought really hard to get itself separated from LAX. Um, we don't have that issue, but there's, we have tremendous opportunity at our airport in San Bernardino. We have UPS and FedEx, and hopefully, if everything goes smoothly, we're gonna have large cargo facilities being built over there to, uh, further expand our cargo capability. But we're still working with the new mayor, actually. He's looking at, uh, he has a relationship with some Asian countries. We're gonna talk to them and possibly even do a trip over there if need be to further look at airlines that may come straight to San Bernardino, which had actually put us on the map significantly. Uh, the new assemblyman, James Ramos, who just recently got elected, contacted us today, and he's gonna have a luncheon with the mayor, myself, and the city manager. We're gonna look at some issues where the state and Sacramento can try to help us with from a city perspective, but furthermore, um, there's some legislation that we need to try to push through Sacramento that actually impacts the airport. So, um, just wanted to make sure that Dr. Daley and, uh, Dr. Leonard are both kind of in the loop on some of the things we're going, that, that we're doing, and, uh, that was it.
Any other reports of councilman?
Well, back in the city of Loma Linda, I have a couple of, my, my issues are not nearly so global and, and. But, uh, one is a, a positive feedback that I gave to the, uh, city manager this afternoon, but I noticed that, you know, we've had, uh, I've had a burr under my saddle about the median in front of the hospital, the surgical hospital for a while now, and finally, we got control of that. And now I noticed today, they're digging it up, and they're going to fix it up so that it's not a weed patch, so, I'm happy to see that. Compliments to Public Works to get that project going. Uh, I look forward to seeing it completed. Uh, the other issue is another burr that's been under- The other issue is another burr that's been under my saddle, and we've talked about this in the past, and I actually meant to discuss it with you this afternoon, but, and that is on the southwest corner of Mountain View and Redlands Boulevard, that mall area that has a subway and so forth. And that is one of the two entry points to our city, and that has looked like a disaster now for years. And if we're talking with the owner of that area, they're not listening, because now there's gophers in there too, with mounds and everything. And I've had, I just had family that came in for the holidays, and they're going, man, you know, you got a nice city, but boy, that's a disaster. What happened there? Looks like somebody shot the sign out, and said, well, it's been that way for a while. Are we making any headway, or, you know, I'm raising this publicly. Hopefully, the owner will hear about it, but if need be, I'll contact the owner or something, because?
We have cited the owner multiple times. The owner pays his citation, cleans up a little bit, and then lets it drop, and then?
His sign hasn't worked for a long time.
But there's other issues, and then he's, I think his cost of business model is to pay his citations and continue with life. The only option we have is to go through a nuisance, and that's a challenging thing, but we will push that as hard as we can.
Okay, I would appreciate that, because it's an eyesore, right where people enter that part of the city. And it seems like we need to have some kind of leverage with an owner that is a minimalist.
We will push harder.
Okay, let me know if you need me to make a phone call, I'll give a testimonial. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other reports of councilman? Any reports of officers? Okay, then the city council is adjourned, and we will move, well, adjourn to a follow-up meeting for some of the public hearings that we talked about earlier. And now we'll move to our housing authority, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda for the housing authority? No takers, the consent calendar is before you. I'll move it, there's a motion, is there support? There's a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Any member reports? Hearing none, any reports of officers? Hearing none, the housing authority is adjourned. Next is our successor agency, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on non-agenda items for the successor agency? No takers, we move to our consent calendar. Is, okay, there's a motion, is there support for that? There's a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, that concludes our three agendas, thank you for coming.